Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, will you please stand?
I'll just come in.
Welcome our Mayor, Councillor Ken Harper, our Deputy Mayor, Councillor Nigel Yates, and our Chief Officer, Mrs Sarah Hayden.
On the team.
We're also having with this evening our new Reverend, the Methodist Chapel, Yann Yann, who's come along to see what happens on, where it was in the future. And after that, well, great, take the prayer for me, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, just delighted to be here again with you all. It feels like a little while since seeing you all. Can I pray for you? Is that all right? And then we'll leave you to it and you can have your joyful discussion of that. So, Heavenly Father, I thank you for this council. I thank you for each person, for the gifts that each one of them brings, for the ways in which you have called each one of them, and I pray this evening you would bless each of them, where you would bless these conversations. We thank you for this town that we serve, for the people in it, and we pray in this room tonight, would you guide and lead? And would you bless each person? In Jesus' name, amen. Bless you all. Enjoy your evening.
Doing a runner, are you now?
Who's that?
A chap, sit down.
Oh, we've got two.
Yann Yann's the new one.
Yeah.
Yes, please do.
So, persons, if I may, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddleham Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to being recorded, your image to be uploaded onto YouTube. The images and sound may be used for other purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the view of Biddleham Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording in public meetings policy if you need more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Officer, and welcome you all back. We've had a short break. I think we're suitably recharged. Um, right, we start off then, the agenda. Uh, at twenty-one is public participation. Have we got a public participation? Well, and Stretcher Police, time to rock and roll, my friend.
So, April last, from the last meeting, not a lot's changed from our view. Also, biggest for the last couple of months, regarding social behaviour and crime in the Biddleham area. Uh, statistics show that ASP in Biddleham is down by thirty-eight per cent. That's a decrease from three hundred and eighty-two incidents to two hundred and seven. That's a decrease of uh, a hundred and twenty-five incidents. All areas of Biddleham have reported drops in social behaviour, with the Biddleham North showing a twenty-seven decrease and the West showing a sixty-eight-seven decrease. Uh, that's the North down from thirty-eight to twenty-four and the West down from twenty-eight to nine. Uh, crime in Biddleham has, uh, increased in the last twelve months. Uh, that's from, uh, that's increased by thirty per cent. That's from, uh, since March, we've seen Biddleham has dropped from a hundred and eighteen reported crimes in March to sixty-nine in August. So that's almost a decrease of fifty per cent in crime in the last eight months. Uh, so we're, we're up and down and obviously we expect with some holidays and the, the warm weather that we've had in Spain. I wouldn't say we've had it for the whole of the holidays. We expect it to fluctuate a little bit, an increase, decrease. Uh, but as for in the local area, we still have some news on bail with curfew. Uh, and if you think now, try to set up, so I'm trying to look at setting up a monthly meeting with councillors, which I suggested last time. I'm just working around that, like, we're just going to be the best teams to, which everybody's. And, uh, the surgery surgeries, we published the stuff to come along to, they've increased the amount of delivery. Still looking a bit more annoyed by it, uh, maybe across the city, which is obviously a lot of the issues before to go around fast. But other than that, from, from last time, not, not a lot has changed from our perspective.
Thank you very much. Um, Councillor Sodds.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A couple of questions. Can you tell us the progress on the, um, Biddleham Youth and Community Zone? Um, I know you've alluded to the fact that youths are on bail, but I don't think that they're on bail for that particular instance. So I don't think we've got any further offer with the investigation.
I will be honest, personally, I don't know, but I can go away and find out, uh, and see where it's at. And obviously, uh, there might be some information that we can't divulge, but I can go away and find out who's dealing with it. Find out the information and come back to you with that.
And also with the incidents at, um, Nykersley, um, Victoria Football Ground as well, with the changing rooms being broken into there. And the booty van that was on the Tunstall Road, um, football fields as well. What, what's the progress update with those three? Where are we at with the investigation?
So that's the youth club.
Youth club, the booty van in Nykersley, right. Yeah. And also, there's been a space of incidents within the last sort of ten days at, um, Church Road Park, where some of the soft tarmac has been ripped up. Um, and some kids, quite a lot of littering, and some kids causing a nuisance up there. So that's just within the last ten days. So patrols could be increased or you could have a nose up round there quite regularly. We'd appreciate that.
Yeah, that is part of our, we have what we call a red route, uh, which is a route that us local officers have to check throughout the week whilst we're at work. That is a red route. I wasn't aware of that incident. Perhaps I've seen any report specifically to us. But I will go away and double check and I'll pass it on to other local officers to keep track of it.
Thank you very much.
Just Councillor Jones, Councillor Jackson.
Uh, yeah, talking to Mr Mayor, actually coming along tonight. Um, cars parked on pavements. We really stuff with it a bit more. Now, I don't have a particular issue with it. I don't really have an issue with it, although it damages the pavements. But when people park on the pavement, we've no room for that thing. I saw a lady on New Street, a couple of days ago, coming on New Street, with a petal of bush there, had to go on to the road, get past the car that was parked along the New Street, because of that this much space between walls. Now, I don't understand the logic. We, and I, I'm sure we'll all admit, we all do it sometimes, because we think we'll leave a bit more space for the cars. But this is a road that's quite narrow. What's a car's parked there anyway? And I just wish that occasionally somebody would get a ticket, because it needs to back to a type of inconsiderate parking needs to be sorted. And it's a road that patrol cars come across there tons of times a day and we, and we just completely ignore it. We put it ignorant. And while I'm on my soapbox, when did it become legal to ride a bicycle on the pavement?
I'll be honest with you, the, the legislation around riding bicycles on pavements, roads and stuff, I don't want to give you an answer.
No, I'm not expecting you to. I'm just having a rant while I'm stood up.
It's not like you.
You know, when I was a kid, you didn't ride on the pavement. Now it seems to be better, you know, adults, whatever, they just ride on the pavement. I'm too, though. So, and, and kind of sync up and just ignore them. You know, at least don't speak to them. So this is sort of policing. Well, what? They want people to A D, talk to them, without telling anything. And at least just say, don't do it. But they're just turning a blind eye all the time. So thanks for coming again. Granted. But if you take back my comments, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Councillor Jackson.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, pleased about the antisocial behaviour figures showing a down, a downward trend. Is it too yet the police to evaluate, um, whether the way that the outreach youth were in town with the young people, that's had perhaps a positive effect on those figures or not?
Again, I don't want to give you an answer straight away, because I feel there'd be no answer, meant it's the, the wrong answer. Uh, I believe, I believe we should be at a point now where we could see statistically if it's helping. Uh, I do believe, I saw an email not long ago, that the youth outreach team had been given some extra funding because it was working so well. Uh, so I'd like to say it is helping us and assessing us and decreasing the, the space of antisocial behaviour in the, the area. But statistically, I'll, I'll go away and try and find out.
Jeff, uh, thank you. It, it's just, what you've actually said is why I asked the question. If, if it is, if it can be proved that there is a link, that that's helping the antisocial behaviour stuff, then it makes it a little bit easier to get the funding to carry, to carry that sort of work on. So that's, that's pleasing how those figures carry on that downwards trend.
Yes, so, so do I.
Any other questions? Right, I'll ask you. Do you still use what they call a crime pattern analysis machine?
Do you still use?
A crime pattern analysis machine?
I don't think it's called that anymore. Uh, we use, we use something which we call, uh, the brain, basically, and it's, it's.
The brain?
Uh, it, it's what we refer to as the brain. It's like, it, it's the equivalent to the police actual computer, basically. And that records just, just test it on what's reported and how it's logged. Because obviously, everything is given its own antisocial behaviour, to crime, what crime, and it will report how many of them are coming in and how many, like, uh, what the result that the crimes are. So it, it's, I'm guessing it's going to be the same system, just a different name.
Hmm. So if you've got this machine which points to hotspots, which you were really talking about. Have you got the resources to attend to these hotspots as a prevention point of view?
So, I think I mentioned in the last meeting, uh, we've had an increase of PCSOs locally called Biddleham, myself being one included, and, uh, there's been another and another shift. So now we've got a full team of local PCSOs. And we've also had a, another officer during the Biddleham local team. So now there's a full team on each shift of PCSOs and full officers. So we can keep a better eye on the hotspots and help decrease, uh, the reputation of antisocial behaviour in the hotspots.
Yeah. So in, in the month of, excuse me, in the month of August, presumably the crime has come down. Or, well, people are not reporting the crime because they're on holiday and things like this. So does that sort of get fed into your way of doing things?
I will be completely honest with you. I don't know. Uh, it's, it's above my head. It's how it's all reported again, how it's reported, and that's how it goes on to the system. I just get what's released from the system and the statistics.
Well, personally, all I can do is thank you very much for your honesty. You know, it's a, it's a rare commodity.
I'd, I'd fairly be honest and tell you something incorrect.
Absolutely.
I am done with telling that. So.
So if there's no further questions, then thank you very much for your attendance. If you wish to stop, please do. Otherwise, do a runner.
For what's the name? I am raising that. Shoots. Thank you very much for hearing me out. I hope you all have a lovely night.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next one is Staffordshire County Council representative. We've got two.
Yeah. Thanks very much. And as I say, thank you to all those turned up earlier to discuss various subjects. I hope we never reduce the amount of questions we have, uh, later on. So thank you very much for turning up. I suspect we almost spent an hour and a bit talking to quite a few of you, uh, particularly Adrian and others. So thank you very much for turning up and going through those issues with us. Um, not much has happened. Um, the only thing that's really been continued since the last meeting is the Health Committee. For some reason, we've had three of those. Uh, we've been thinking of the operating plan and performance, et cetera, of the new integrated care board and how they're going to measure their success. There's quite a lot of work still to do, um, in relation to looking at how they're going to, uh, present their dashboard and everything else for us. Uh, we've also had the adult social care, the pressures and the, the requirements from those in terms of getting their needs assessed and things like that as well. So we're fairly on top of those two areas, because for those that don't know, the, the social care side of things is our biggest expenditure at the county council uh, in terms of crew and, and people who we employ, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the only other thing I would like to say in terms of health at the moment is that Covid and flu vaccinations are out there at the moment. Please get those. If that can go out, uh, from the town council as well, that would be fantastic. Uh, we do have some meetings coming up for all in the council, a full council meeting and a few others, I'm sure. Um, we can cover that later, uh, from Nigel's DP. Um, I do have a letter in relation to the RAC situation at schools. Um, I won't necessarily read it all out now and send it to, um, Sarah to send it round. Uh, I'll just read one paragraph at the moment. I'll be all saying that, that we now have sixty-one schools needing further investigation. With the recent change in approach by, uh, the Department of Education, we have accelerated the programme. And these sites will be surveyed prior to the October half term. So follow-up investigations may be necessary where intrusive investigation by drilling is required. Where necessary, this will follow shortly after the initial survey. So far, we have not been advised by the, uh, Department of Education that any maintained schools in Staffordshire are included in the list of those schools nationally, that will have to close on to the use of RAC in their construction. So that's the current situation. Obviously, there's still sixty-one schools to go, but I thought it was important for you to, to know that with all the schools round here as well. Um, in terms of other areas, it's been quite quiet. There's nothing from the libraries at the moment or from the Family Improvement Board or anything like that. Um, there is some, uh, movement on some flood action things, which are in the rest of my division, not necessarily here. Um, had a quick conversation, uh, with Anthony at the Zone. Um, there is a bit more work to do than they had originally thought. Some of the brickwork, uh, or rather the cement holding the blocks together at the top of the wall has, has in fact been damaged by fire. So they're going to have to remove some of the blocks and, uh, re, reset them and re-cement them in place before they can do the rendering. Um, so I just thought I'd let you know that as well. So there's a slight delay on that furnishing at the moment. DHP, we had lots of that, uh, earlier on today. Um, the grass along Conway Road, I've had a report in and sent that in. Part Lane, and I think that's a, it's a joint thing between us at the moment, is still ongoing. Uh, they've done some of the repairs, but nowhere near enough. And it's slightly annoying because it was over, well, my number one on my list to try and get that part lane area, um, at the top end repaired as best we could uh, during this extra highways money that is available. And hopefully that will be done before October thirty-first. And then finally, grants in terms of the environment grant and the community grant, we've had a, a warning on the community grant. Grants, uh, this time round need to be in and successfully completed, uh, by October thirty-first. I would like at least to have two more, uh, grant applications come forward within this area, um, or even more. Um, I just need to try and contact those places. I know Tom's worked with the bowling club. I wanted to kind of have a quick chat with them sometime to see if there's anything else we can do. And I was going to go and have a chat with Anthony, but he's still been popping from his hip. So hopefully I'll get hold of him and may, maybe find someone up there that he would like to support as well. If any of you've got any ideas, please let me know. Um, and I think that's it. I'll leave it to, there we are. Was that a record?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Has anyone got a, oh, yes. Go on, Jill.
It's just, I'm sure you discussed this earlier, but for the public record, certainly, because hopefully people will look back. I think the biggest complaint in Biddleham at the moment is the road going down towards, um, Brownleys, Brinley Ford, at the very bottom, before you get into Stoke-on-Trent. Horrendous. Um, since I've been away, it's been patched. Obviously, the issue with the water is still running. So we know that the Duchy of Lancaster owns that land, so we need to get in touch with the King. Um, but can you give us an update as to what on earth the plan is for that? Because that's, I think that's the most complained about bit, bit of road at the moment in Biddleham, so.
It's sort of halfway between the two. My, my problem with that one to some extent is that the water, although it comes from our side to some extent, down the very edge of what the bit of land that SMDC, those are the border, most of the damage is actually on the Stoke side, further down, and not on our side. But so the wardens and the county councils just say that they try to put pressure on others or have that permission from Stoke to go in and do the job if they, Stoke don't want to do it. So it's, it's a bit of a, you know, pointing the fingers in both directions. So I would, we'd try our best. We'll see what I think.
Try best, because that's the, the biggest gripe at the minute.
I fly over every time I come in.
It's horrific. It's to cause an accident as well, because you swerve onto the, as you're coming down.
Yeah.
Swerve onto the right hand side of the road and there's a slight bend and it will cause an accident.
When I was unfortunately, you know, the county council, I supported, because I supported both sides of the road. I said the, the ice, uh, damage, and they managed to come and stop it for a bit. It's just got it up again now.
If you can just, uh, add, add weight to that. One of the issues is, is that it's a strategic route. And there is a, there is the recognition that it needs a, a significant capital injection, to put it right. Now, when that work is done, it's very hard to foresee the A five-two-seven not being closed for a significant period of time. I think the reality is, is that works are done in a manner to try and keep the A five-two-seven open, because it's the main link into the Stoke-on-Trent, the motorways in, in the south, so it becomes a problem. The particular issue we've had with this summer is the continual drainage of water which goes off, so it keeps that tarmac wet. So the, so the situation of taking the surface off and then resurfacing when there's a constant flow of water is proven impossible. So what they've done as an interim is they've overfilled to hopefully sort of plug the gap as it goes. And as of today, the, if anybody's driven down there, there's actually traffic lights down there. Because one of the things which they were considering doing, and it takes a degree of investigation, is to see if they can actually improve the drainage underground to take some of the water off before it reaches there. And I think it's, it's, it's partly youth, uh, repairs on the old utility patches, because it's mainly the utility patch repairs which have failed, but it's partly an investigation as well. See if they can actually improve the drains to stop the amount of water going down there, so they can do a more permanent repair. But there is a recognition at counties that it is a strategic, requiring significant capital, I think. I don't think there's a lot which we can do this year other than keep patching. But I think for next year, both of us collectively have got to lobby to see if we can really get the work done. The irony is, is that in the old days, you know, a few years ago, the problem was the capacity of the drains, the ones which go across from the Butterfly Garden. That's been improved significantly. So now it's surface water drainage. So it is improving, but it just doesn't work at this moment.
Thank you very much. Councillor.
Uh, yes, uh, to both of our district councils, this is.
County?
County, sorry. County, I'm a district councillor, I forgot that. The county councils, I'm sorry, I'm competing with the deputy mayor now on lack of voice as well. So this is going to be a challenge. Sorry, you made reference to maintained schools. Now, obviously, the majority of schools are not maintained schools. They are academies and they are academy trust, uh, and forwarded academy trusts. And my concern, it goes outside of the buildings here, that goes to the children that are within them. Now, those children may be in academies and academy trusts that may run themselves as private businesses, but they are in the watchet of the council. So what are the council doing to enforce the same level onto the academies and the academy trusts as they are within the maintained schools? Does that make sense? Yeah? Yes. Uh, what, what it says in here is that, um, there's a four hundred and five schools in Staffordshire in total of a hundred and twenty-six who are in the maintained area. So that was before I read out the paragraph. It was at the moment. Um, they are the same. Please be assured, the safety of pupils and school staff is our top priority. And we have also written to our two hundred and seventy-eight academy schools, offering them advice and support. If any of you or with us have questions, please do not hesitate to get in touch. And that's from Jonathan Bryson, the cabinet man.
But Councillor Jackson.
Uh, yeah, sort of on, on the same, same, um, subject, really. Uh, when the rat thing first came out, it was, it was highlighted that at, at least five per cent of schools had not responded to the letter that the government had, had sent out. Have you had any indication from officers, uh, how many schools in Staffordshire are in that sort of five per cent grouping? No?
No, not, not at the moment. They, they.
Useful to try and find that.
Well, at the moment, there's no schools on the list. Precisely. But they're not aware of any schools that haven't sent it back. That's something that they're still saying that we're still waiting to hear back from.
Okay.
Touch wood, um, you know, if sixty-one will be okay, there won't be too much work to do. Okay.
I think there was another.
I'll keep in touch with you, Stephen.
I think there's another hand up there, was there not?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, because Nigel.
All right, thank you very much. Any more questions? Right, now it's Nigel's. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So covering the other things, just touching on the way we organised it earlier on today is that, uh, me and Keith are usually invited by Sarah to discuss issues around, you know, town projects, uh, to drive them forward. And we've, we've agreed to start meeting at four o'clock, so we could have an hour with Sarah to go through anything which once died in go. But that gives us an opportunity between five and six. If anybody wants to discuss with county representatives anything in detail, then it does give, give us an opportunity to go through on that. That doesn't negate, obviously, doing the public participation, but it keeps it, it keeps it relatively tight and on to news way of the things. There's three things, second to what Keith raised, which we want to raise. The first thing, and it applies for the district as well, is the importance that if you have got any issues of using the reporting forms and the reporting systems, either the app through where my staffs or, or going through the website, uh, through the, uh, as opposed to emailing or asking a question, the reason is that gives a reference. And that reference creates a job, because the jobs are completed by subcontractors, whether it be Amy or whether it be Norse or whether it be AES. And the thing is, all those jobs need to be logged, so they can go through a costing system, obviously, prepared for. So they will not be lost in the system and they will get attention. What you can do is follow that up with an email to me, Keith, or in the district councils, states, district councils, with a reference number and comment, so that can be chased up. So that's important. Like, when you report to Poto, thank you very much for reporting to Poto. Here's the link to report it as well. And let me have the reference to what I made note. It's not being lazy. It's making sure it's logged and never forgotten and ever off the system. And that goes for a wishlist as well. Oh, it'd be a good idea to have an extra sign here. You can log it through other, and then it won't fall off the system and it will be reviewed at the next face-to-face DHP meeting. And then we can prioritise it and, and debate it and see where we can put it in the system. So it isn't a fob off. It's actually a way of making sure that jobs don't fall off and disappear off the system. The other two things which I want to mention is that Staffordshire County Council, as a tier-one authority, uh, has been awarded in principle the funding for the rollout of EV charging points. It's a, uh, initiative called LEVI, which stands for Local Electric Vehicle Implementation Points, they have put LEVI P. Uh, and that gives us a reasonably large amount of money to actually start a rollout of EV charging points. And it's something which they distribute a little bit like the, uh, yeah, the disabled facilities grants, which comes into county and then gets distributed to boroughs and districts. That's going to be distributed to boroughs and districts to actually port EV charging points for residents within the urban and rural area. And it gives a significant amount of central government funding. Our Staffordshire County Council have got to submit a business plan just to get it absolutely confirmed, but that is really a formality how it's been awarded. Uh, we've also been awarded as a triage one, which means the first payments which go out, Staffordshire County Council will receive those first payments. So we're looking at starting the implementation at county and therefore at Staffordshire Moorlands towards the back end of twenty twenty-four, which sounds a long way away, but, you know, with the, with the planning and the traffic orders and the roadworks associated with it, that is actually quite, quite quick. So that will put EV charging points in Biddleham. It should put EV charging points in Biddleham more. Cheltenham, Leake, Shedle, Longford, wherever. Now, they will be residence, residence-based charging. So they will tend to be the, the, the lower kilowattage, but it's so, it's certainly not classed as the destination charge. The idea is, is people come, if they use those as residents overnight, or the people who come to spend time within the town, within the area where they, where they stay, be not the ones which are the super fast, where people sit, have a cup of coffee and then disappear and don't spend any money in their locality. Because at the end of the day, if you think about it, we, the county council, district council doesn't have petrol stations. You know, so we, we have to get that balance right between servicing the residents and servicing people who are just flying through and charging. And the private sector heavily involved in that. The other thing we'd want to mention is that, again, working in cooperation with the boroughs and districts is that, uh, the county council are working on a local nature recovery strategy, which from the district point of view is, we're running that as a plan for nature, which, without going into too much details, the main purpose of the strategies is to identify locations to create or improve habitat, most likely to provide the greatest benefit for nature and the wider environment. So there's going to be an awful lot of documentation, an awful lot of work going on in the next, over, over the next seven years to actually enhance the natural environment, which will also help us to meet our climate change, uh, uh, targets with regard, with regards to where problems are frustrated, whether that be tree planting, soil recovery or peat bog and wetting recovery. So there's an awful lot of background work which has been going on. Uh, it will be presented as the plan for nature to the Community Scrutiny Group next Monday. Very much topped up the press, but it fits in with the county-wide strategy of making sure that there's a common approach in each of the districts and boroughs within, within the county. So I think, I'm confident over the course of the next. So I think, I'm confident over the course of the next two years, you'll see significant change within our green spaces and within our. Verge management policies, which fits in both with making sure that proper maintenance is seen to be done. But also with an emphasis on nature, on nature recovery and biodiversity. And the final thing which I, which I've got to say, conversation which we had with Sarah, I have got some funds left in my community fund. I've got to add to Biddlesworth together initiatives. So we've agreed a figure which is available with Sarah, and that will hopefully be divvied out within the division. And it's working on, working on the same for the Biddles East area. So that we actually support with a reasonable amount of money, the works, works together to make sure there's an even spread. Throughout the town and including Biddlesworth and the outline areas. So hopefully that will get distributed in time, distributed successfully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Jones and councillor Garvey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just one for you to chase, Nigel, if you would. Our dispute with councillor Salt, the most annoying set of potholes in Biddles. There's a brilliant for, the most annoying set of potholes in Biddles is on New Street by the entrance to Mycristus. You have to go on the wrong side, you know where we are. As of yesterday, at least, they haven't been done. Although the worst in filling potter was at New Street yesterday, but they didn't do that. It all nicely painted round now, and that'll be for that month. Who said, perhaps you give them a no child.
They are due to be done by the thirty first of October. I've got a D H P meeting on the twenty sixth, I think, as of September. And it is the priority to chase because they have been ticking off around, around the town. And they've actually done an extra one, which I, the people Biddlesworth don't listen to that. The, the one which was on my reserve list was actually Wedgwood Lane and Hall's Road. And I know they've done some repairs on Wedgwood Lane and Hall's Road, so I was a little bit surprised that they've done the reserve list before it is the primary list. The only thing I can think of, me and councillor Flumder have discussed this, is when they timed the Park Lane and New Street one together because they have got to come back to do that. And I won't say much in defence of county council because I'm on obviously the opposition benches. But the problems which we've got with a lot of these repairs are failed utility repairs. And that's certainly the case in New Street. And one of the things which I really want to push, as all councils want to push, is making sure that when the utility companies dig a road up, you put it back properly. You don't just skip and go, because it's just not lasting.
If I may, Mr Mayor, you just come back quietly. I, I don't expect any saying, I know you're doing your best to get it fixed. What does slightly irritate me is the way they categorised it. I mean, they're, they're not category one, whatever it is, they're not our project because they're not deep enough. Because there's a string of them, and because they're on a blind bed. It means you have to cross onto the wrong side, they're on a blind bed. And that really makes it a pat one for me, and I just wish that, you know, actually push some representation to maybe get it. Really categorising the alternative bit, but I know, I know you're doing your best, I'm just starting you to.
Just quickly going back on that, I absolutely agree, and a case in point is that very annoying one, which has now been repaired. On Woodhouse Lane, on the sort of switch bend towards the bottom, it was classed as category three. I begged and begged and begged and begged till eventually they did it because they were sick of me. But they said it's category three, it doesn't need repairing. I said, the reality of it is, is people see it and the perception is it's deep and they move to the side. So you're absolutely right, and I do agree.
Thank you. councillor Garvey.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, first of all, thank you very much in terms of your donation from the community fund. Working through that through your point, and I'd welcome your nature recovery strategy, but I'd request. Could you provide an update on that and progress to the Environment and Climate Change Working Group? So we're fully aware of what's going on, please. Going to your E V charging points. I'm aware that there are grants from S M D C and the uptake of those grants has been very, very poor. So are there plans in, in place to try and promote and improve the uptake of the funding that's available? And could you share that with us at some point?
Yes. Firstly, with regards to the local nature recovery strategy or the, or the plan for nature with regards to Saps Moors. It, it is actually going through scrutiny at the moment, so it's, it's not quite hot off the press because it hasn't got to the press, but it's. It hopefully will be approved by, it'll be passed off by scrutiny and then it'll go to, to county. But all the grips are nicely lined up, ready to be, ready to be put, put together. And I think when we come to the environment meeting on Thursday. We can start to discuss some of the potential projects which we can do in Biddles. Which hopefully I'll be able to announce some external funding for as well at the same time. So that is, that is the plan on that, and your second point was the.
The, the E V, the, well, the third point is, the E V charging points, there's a very poor uptake from the S M D C brands. How, how are you going to improve upon that with this new funding available from the county?
Well, the, the funding available to the county will be actually, the, 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 the locations will be decided on at district level. As, as part of, as part of the capital strategy with, with the assets team. It won't just be on car parks, the idea is, is that there's charging points available. Whether I think it's, it's, it's a seven minute walk from somebody's house, we've got to have a charging point within seven minutes walk or some, around that range, range. So the, there, there is a heat map, very similar to what the police use, to actually pinpoint the locations where we need to put the charging points. And then obviously there'd be a slight movement to, to find a location which is convenient, convenient to that.
And the, the final question actually is, you mentioned about reporting things through various electronic systems. Is there a non-electronic system for those people that don't have access to electronic systems to be able to report these issues? Is there a paperwork system? And if there is, how does it work and where is it located? How does one access it?
You can still phone up and they will give you a reference. Both of the county, county open between ten A M and two P M. And the district is, is open, I think it's between nine thirty and three thirty at this moment in time. So you can't, you still can phone up and they still should be giving you a reference. Obviously, if you can have access to the computer, allows to give a lot more information, a lot more pertinent information and get a reference back straight away. But there are all the answers. We were, we were looking at it to corporate review this morning at county, and you'd be surprised how few have actually come through now. Either by, either by letter, believe it or not, or by, by telephone. The majority are by email, and it's really trying to move the email ones where people have obviously used an electronic device. Into the reporting system because straight away you get feedback with the reference. So it's really to try and, not try and, you know, if people want to use email file, but try and sort of move the email column. Into the report form column because straight away you've got access to that feedback loop. And that's the reason I wanted to stress it today. So emails to complain becomes reported complaint. Follow up if you want by an email to say, I put this report in reference and I'm not happy, is absolutely fine. But that reference logs a job for what are subcontractors who are paid on jobs. Remember, both the district and the county, there's no real direct, isn't some social care. But when it comes to highways, when it comes to verges, when it comes to signs and all the sort of problems, there's no direct employees. So it has to be a system where that, that job is logged and the job card is raised.
Right, the next two speakers, Chris and then Jill, but before we call them, do you want to drink a water or something? You know?
I'm sure.
Well, yeah, that's some concern about you. Yeah. Chris, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just in terms of the communications, Nigel, I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of what the system is at the county, but certainly at the district. We, we had a meeting last week on, you know, what, you know, our priorities are going to be for the forthcoming next two or three years. And the district council have, it's going live within a matter of weeks. Where we've got, now we're a reporting system where if any issues raised by a councillor from a resident. There's a proper timeline, it gets sent directly to the head of that relevant department who then has to contact the relevant officer to, to, to deal with that. So it should be a lot more effective from, from our perspective as councillors. Whereas instead of you, you make a phone call and then the sort of the trail goes dead. We've now got a system where you've got a timeline on, so we can chase the authority back up. Now, hopefully that's going to go live, as I say, in the next two weeks, I think I'm getting on the pilot group. So it should, it should improve the communications, certainly from residents. I think there should be a direct, direct line where the residents can make complaint to the, to authority. Or also then to the councillors who then, you know, register it as well. So hopefully that system will, will, will improve, you know, for, for residents making it. Because, and, and one of the points we did raise at the meeting, the priority setting meeting, was about, you know, having human interaction. Which is going back to what Jim was saying, you know, with, a lot of people haven't got internet, a lot of people haven't got computers. So therefore their only way of getting in touch with the authority is via the phone. And, and that's something that we are going to prioritise, so we're making sure that we're going to have enough staff. To, you know, answer the calls on behalf of the residents. So, you know, they, they don't just get an answer phone or whatever, that, that there's a proper line of communication and a timeline so we can chase it up if there's any issue.
Yeah, I understand. Well, thank you for that, Chris, because I found what you said very, very enlightening. And I think quite frankly, the district council are going in the right direction. Change. Jill.
Just a quick point regarding the nature strategy. My mother-in-law lives on, my God, it's gone out my head. Anyway, somewhere outside, and the grants rose really high, as been doing, I think it's just because they're doing reduced cuts and probably for the environment. But to a lot of people, it seems like that they can't be bothered. So when you're doing the nature recovery strategy, I think publicity and communicating with the public is really important because at the moment. They think stuff's not being cut because there's not enough money or, you know, you can't be bothered or no one knows what they're doing. But it actually might be for a very good reason in terms of biodiversity. Like you communicate that to residents who don't know, so that's just something to bear in mind. And the second thing was regarding the infrastructure for E V charging points. So for example, my nearest place to go and charge my car, if you had an electric car, would be on Wolf Road. But for some people down Hall's Road, it might end up being Hall's Road Car Park and an E V charging point installed on there. Which raises a question that we've got on the agenda later on for record immunity that might come up about the locking of car parks. In which case, we wouldn't want to lock car parks if we want residents to go to and charge the cars on car parks. So for example, Biddles Grange, there might be an E V charging point on the car park there that closes at dusk. So these are things to think about if we are thinking about putting E V charging points in public car parks, we don't want the car parks locked. Thank you.
Thank you for some very valid points, Sergio.
If I can just come back on that first point, certainly from the district council point of view, one thing which we have got a tacit agreement on. Is that if we do something different, which one person will say fantastic biodiversity, another person will say neglect. Either way, we put a correct sign with branding to explain what we're doing. And one of the, one of the things which we stress in, and it's going to be in the green spaces and verges policy, Staffordshire Moors. Is that there will always be a threshold strip mode. So none of this encroachment onto the pavement. So it actually does look like somebody's made a decision, but that'll be backed up with signage. It'll be a big sign, but it'll be dun dun dun, this is being done because, you know.
That's good. Jeff.
Yes, I have to listen to that. Based on, on the car parks, the decision, I'm, I'm, I'm welcome money from the government for the electric charging points. But has that decision made the charging points on Wolf Road. Go further down though, will it make it, that decision, will it actually happen earlier?
I, my personal feeling is to happen earlier, because as much as there was a will from, you know, the previous administration, I'm not saying that as a, as a negative.
It was ready to go.
Well, it was ready to go, but there wasn't really the funding to do it. So the funding in the budget was two hundred thousand pounds, now two hundred thousand pounds sounds an awful lot of money to us as an individual. When it comes to purchasing an E V point and digging the road up and putting the wiring in. I know you're saying there's cabling there, but it's still got the connections. Doesn't really do many, many, many points, to be perfectly honest. So this particular funding, which is going to track an awful lot of private sector investment because the way which, which these things work. Is significantly, I don't want to put a figure, is significantly by a factor of hundreds of percent bigger. Which actually gives you the, the economy a scale to it. The other thing about the county approach and having a common approach is it means that you will have the economy of scale. About the purchase of the materials, the purchase of the cables, the purchase and the maintenance contracts for the E V charging points themselves. So it will be a lot more efficient system. There is a degree of bureaucracy which you can imagine with county. But once that bureaucracy has got to the tipping point and we start, it should be a case of like, like shelling peas. And I'm pretty, pretty confident about that, to be perfectly honest. So what we're looking to do is use the two hundred thousand pounds, which is a relatively small amount of money and will service. The lower kilowatt chargers, is use that to encourage the, the council employees to change to E V. Charging by putting E V charging points where the employers need them, like a good employer should be. Because I think we can do some, we can do something significant with that. And that hopefully will include, you know, putting sites within, within the town hall, shall we, ten coaches. And the, the wider employees within, within the town hall complex to actually have the confidence to move to E V vehicles. Because we've got through this across the board.
Okay. Councillor.
Yeah. Yeah, you're quite right. As Lee Yates, there, there wasn't the funding there available from the government, the government were not feeding funding down to districts and boroughs. And one or two boroughs like Derbyshire Dales made terrible mistakes. They went in a countywide scheme there and the take-up in Bakewell was absolutely minuscule in comparison. But the problem is that you're right with the slow chargers, they can work on the existing cabling. If there's cabling nearby, they can work on that. Fast chargers need three phase. So therefore, at a thousand pounds a meter, it can be very expensive to put fast chargers in. So you've got to have a lot of turnover of people to make it viable. So it looks as if this new countywide government-backed scheme could be quite useful. Because I think that the amount of money the district had at the time. Would be, what, about two, two, two and a half years ago, would have just about done. A couple of charges in Wolf Road, a couple of charges in Tape Street, in Chittle. And a few round Ballers House, and that would have been it. It wouldn't have been able to do any more. So I welcome this, it's very, very useful. But I know having, you know, been involved in, in that sort of thing, how difficult it is. The economy of scale will make it far easier. Because hopefully they'll be able to employ a generic contractor that will be able to, to do that. So the price wouldn't be X number of pounds per unit. It would be minus so many thousand pounds per unit and with a net Y. So encourage that, well, surely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alan. Shall we, councillor Owen, answer it?
All right, I answer to anything personally. Right, these are slow chargers, yes, and they're, and they're for public use. Is that correct?
They are not fast chargers, but I wouldn't call them slow chargers as in residential chargers.
Right. What's the security on them then? If I, I know, well, i- if a person goes and plugs in, presumably they are paying for that service. How secure is that link? I mean, it's, it's a classic advert, isn't it, where somebody comes along and unplugs it and, and people die, but. Will it be secure for the person who is actually, has actually paid for and receiving a charge?
How do you find it? Are you saying safe or secure?
Secure.
I would expect so, but I haven't got the exact answer to that. Well, that's something which has crossed my mind. I, I'm not aware of any issues of willful damage on charging infrastructure within the UK.
I'm not talking about that. Talking about somebody who was paid to charge the vehicle. And then somebody else comes along and says, oh, I'm at that, and plugs in instead. What, what's, what's the security?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. It's a good question, I will.
You can give me a quick answer.
Well, you can give me a quick answer.
On a lot of cars, once you lock your car, it actually locks the charging point into the car, you're probably moving to tell cars are locked again.
Ah. I can, I can imagine as well that as soon as it's unplugged, it'll start to stop, which is odd. So you can't have a situation of.
Yeah, but the thing is, if you're expecting your car to be charged when, when, when you come back to it and somebody else is charged.
When the charge, you can't do that.
Yeah, I'd like you to speak.
Yeah, thanks, now, that's, I was just going to say that, as the honourable Alex, I can tell you what happens if you plug it in, you put your credit card in. It charges, it's going to be unplugged, it stops charging, and if you plug it in again, it won't carry on charging. So weird.
That's why I was, that's why I was wondering about the security in the context of, of damage.
While I'm on my feet, I thought this was supposed to be a presentation by councillor.
While I'm on my feet, I thought this was supposed to be a presentation by county councillors and a few quick questions. We seem to have turned it into a debate.
Well, is there any other questions before we get anything out? All right. I'd like to thank both county councillors. Uh, you've done a lot of, and, uh, it to me, it's been very informative, quite frankly. Um, except for you, Chris. Um, right, we move on to the next item. Which is apologies. Have we any apologies?
I think councillor Royston lost all the apologies.
Yes, I I watched over by a door.
Right, so they've been recorded. Uh, we know item twenty-three, declaration of interest. A is the, uh, declare any disclosure, pecuniary interests and dispensations. Does any councillor? Councillor Rogers?
There's some expenses, some travel expenses to make way, thank you.
Thank you. Item B to declare any other disclosable interests. Right, thank you very much for that. We'll move on. It's, uh, twenty-four to the minutes. To approve and sign the minutes of the town council meeting held on, uh, Tuesday, the eleventh of July twenty-three.
Good bit, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much.
To read these.
Yeah, by all means.
The deputy mayor would usually read these things, so if you're happy for me.
Sorry.
Especially softy's voice.
That's what they do.
I think that would possibly be helpful.
Yeah, well, oh.
Uh, so we've got town council, uh, meetings from Tuesday the eleventh, uh, there is is present. And those in attendance. Uh, eleven is public participation. We've got police, uh, and county council representatives. Twelve apologies, thirteen declarations of interest. Fourteen minutes, there were five sets of minutes there that were approved or agreed. Fifteen was mayor's communications. Sixteen standing agenda items in relation to town council process. Health and safety activities and the Bit of Works Together project. Seventeen to receive an update on outside body meetings attended in the past months. Uh, eighteen to consider hosting a group of Staffordshire Malls quarts in the town hall, show practice. And nineteen, uh, A and B were a council plan. Oh, and C was granted. Confidential item on the back, item twenty.
Well, thank you very much. Well, that was a proposal that we accept.
Through the corners of the land.
By councillor Hart, always. Attended by councillor Jones. You're right, I'm just, uh, move on to the next one.
Does it pay?
Sorry.
Please, in favour.
Oh, yes, all in favour, please. I see that as non-against, so no abstentions. We'll take it. Um, B to receive the minutes of the recreation and amenities on the eleventh of July.
I would like to move those, please, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, again, if everyone's happy, I'll read through those, um, that there was present. Those in attendance, eleven apologies. Twelve declarations of interest, thirteen minutes.
That's a reference, sorry. Yes, I believe I was present at that meeting, but my attendance hasn't been recorded.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Um, fourteen, consider amendments to burial. Fifteen, to receive a presentation on Springfield Road management arrangements. Sixteen, to receive a presentation on Utterfire Gardens management arrangements. Seventeen jobs, jobs for the Langsmen, and eighteen to consider land opportunities for the town.
We had a proposal for that, well. Councillor Hart, secondly, councillor Garvey. All in favour of accepting? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Um, I'd proceed to receive the minutes of planning committee held on the eighteenth of July. Do you have not sure the term will be there, though? So. You get the minutes for that.
What's that? Planning committee. Yes, I do saw.
Other.
Okay, um, we had it proposed, of course.
Yeah, yes, proposed, yeah, councillor Hart.
Okay, so I'll run through those. Um, present, and in attendance, twenty-two apologies. Twenty-three declarations of interest, twenty-four minutes. Twenty-five is a standing agenda item in relation to proposed sites for local listings. Twenty-six, to receive a verbal update on progress with the neighbourhood plan and neighbourhood development order. Twenty-seven, to receive an update on town council planning applications. Twenty-eight, an item requested by councillor Hawley. Twenty-nine.
Councillor Smith, sorry.
Just to note that one of the planning applications, um, was for the house that I live in, but I wasn't present when that was discussed, because I arrived later on.
Thank you very much, Councillor.
Uh, twenty-nine is new planning applications. Thirty is considering supplementary applications. Thirty-one, was new decisions and notices received from the district council. Thirty-two was appeals, the one on those.
Right. It's fine now. Uh, uh, accept that the, uh, the minutes are correct. The sentence, sentence was Jim.
My proposal.
Yeah. All right, then, uh, John reference second. All in favour? Thank you for that. No votes against, I'll take it. Right. Abstentions. So, sorry, I just noticed one hand wasn't up. Um. Where are we? The next one, D, to receive the minutes town and community on the eighteenth of July.
It is. Present, in attendance, number eight apologies. Nine declarations of interest. Minutes. Eleven, to receive an update on the district council tourism strategy implementation following a meeting on the twenty-second of June. Twelve, to note that D-Day eighty is in twenty twenty-four. Do councillors wish to be involved in this event? Thirteen, item requested by councillor Kaziki to consider the removal of the Nazi post box. Fourteen, item requested by councillor Rogers to agree a date for Christmas lights working group meeting. Fifteen, item requested by councillor Yates to consider additional tree planting within the town and ordering trees. Potential items, sixteen, to review the police report on crime prevention in the town centre and to consider next steps. Seventeen, item request, request by councillor Salt to receive an update on the station road fountains. Eighteen, item requested by councillor Smith to receive an update on the mosaic project at Station Road. Nineteen, item requested by councillor Salt to receive an update on the mining lanterns. And then that's it.
That's it, thank you very much. Right, we've had a proposal, here's, uh, Jim's second, did he? So all in favour of accepting the minutes, please, raise your hands. All right, thank you. Any against? Abstentions, right. The next one is, you're doing very well, by the way.
Thank you.
Finance, to approve the minutes for the finance strategy held on the twenty-fifth of July twenty-three.
I should move those minutes, please, Mr Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, present, in attendance, six apologies, twenty-seven declarations of interest, twenty-eight minutes. Twenty-nine, strategic direction. Thirty, that matters, A, B and C. Thirty-one, town council grants. Thirty-two, policies, A, B, C, D and E. Thirty-three, standing agenda items. A and B. Confidential items, thirty-four was quotations, that's A. B. C and D. Thirty-five, receiving a verbal update on CCTV provision. Thirty-six, considering the outstanding list of district council assets tasks. Thirty-seven, to consider setting a budget for Christmas celebrations from E Mart reserves. Thirty-eight, consider setting a budget for Bit of Works Together projects for the E Mart reserves. Thirty-nine, to receive an update on distributed funding by Staffordshire Malls District Council and to approve the allocation of remaining grant funding. Forty, to approve a payment for remembrance Sunday back.
Thank you. Uh, all in favour of accepting them minutes?
You have a second, sorry.
Well, there were a second. All right, councillor Hart, seconded it. All in favour, please, raise your hands. Yep, thank you. Give us two minutes and then in the back of my feeling. The next item is actually mayor's communications. But I would like, um, do allow, if you'd allow councillor Rogers to rise to his feet. I believe he has something to say, and I think it's an appropriate time.
I thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll make it very, very brief. There is some reports, well, thank you from Jim Davis, to be quite honest, and myself. About all the effort he was putting on Saturday for the car go. I'd like to thank all the office staff, all their help and support that they put in there. And all the volunteers that worked on the day, marshalling, et cetera. Without you all, the day could not have gone forward. That's a thank you from Jim Davis and myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne, but I I think all councillors will to express their thanks to you, to you. Um, because you did a hell of a, I mean, you had a sweater on that day. Can I say that?
Yeah.
But you did, and you worked really, really hard. Um. I've I've got to say this, if, uh, one or two members of the public have said this, that if there's ever an event going on or anything needs to be done, Wayne is always there. I'm not saying he's getting it right, because that would be too much. The boss, Wayne is always there. So Wayne, thank you very much, and long may it last. Right, mayor's comes. I haven't listed where I've been because in case I've left something off, and then that would be a terrible sin. But consistent, what I've seen consistently throughout all the groups that I've visited is this desire and a genuine desire to care for other people. Um, you know, it it is overwhelming, quite frankly. I mean, I'm not sort of moved to tears, far from it, but, you know, it does grab your, uh, tummy and twist it, um, and makes you think that these people, they put their heart and soul into looking after folks and generating things for Biddleford, giving Biddleford the right image. Um. And then, I'm su- I'm sure a previous mayor, you've been around these places, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Um, and long may this last because, uh, we've got a fantastic set of people in Biddleford. Um, often we don't accept or recognise these people, but without them, we go down, quite frankly. So, yeah. Great set of people. That's it. All right. Uh, the next one is standing agenda items. A to receive the update of the management of the town council assets. But then.
Thank you. Uh, I know we've had some discussion about RAC. Um, the only one of the buildings that we manage where that's a potential risk for us is this one. Um, I've asked the question of the district councils to whether they have completed an assessment. It is made of concrete and is a nineteen sixties building, so I think there is potential risk. Uh, albeit we are on the list for a survey, so we'll wait and see what that comes back with. Um, I have sent some information to you today, which I don't propose to discuss in any great detail, but to add it. The town and community committee, um, agenda for further debate, obviously where we can talk about it in more detail, but there is a new shared prosperity fund, uh, pot that has come out in the past few days since I sent this agenda out. Um, there is some capital funding available for us which might help to support us with our aspirations for the town hall frontage. Um, there is a slight error on that, uh, the information in that I obviously don't understand the structures in place there, so the information hasn't been on the cabinet but has been to the separate board, which I thought must report to the cabinet, seemingly does, so apologies for that, but the the rest of the information is accurate, so take some time, if you will, and have a read of that over the coming week, and then we can have some more discussions about the pots and money that we might apply for and how we might consider spending the allocations that we have been given so far, so there's some news on that. Um, is that all right?
Yeah, that's, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Councillor Smith.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Smith, sorry, Drew.
Um, yeah, it was just to see if we'd had an update yet regards the visitor's centre. Um, and obviously we're wanting to look at a possible tenant for visitor's centre if we had any further updates. But that's on the agenda for later, okay, so confidential, it's after that.
Yeah, so, right, so any more questions? No, right. Uh, to receive an update on health and safety activities, and before Sarah starts, I've got to pay tribute to to Sarah and and the rest of the staff for their commitment to, uh, do health and safety. Uh, it's something that is very, very re- relevant in this day and age. It's like to know that concrete buildings, uh, is it safe to go in them? Uh, so, yeah, thank you, Sarah, and 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 your staff. Uh, you you do do a very, very val- valuable job. Um, a lot of the work you've done is, you know, you do is unseen. But, you know, we do benefit from it in that we're all still alive. Thank you very much. Right, sorry, that's your bit now.
No, I I haven't, uh, got anything, um, much to report there. We've recently done a health and safety audit, um, at the visitor's centre. Obviously, we have a partner who operates the cafe there. Um, there are no high respectivities going on there, no issues to bring to your attention. Um, only ever small, um, recommendations with our buildings now, so I think we had got one no smoking sign and the recommendation was that we should put them in toilets as well. So it's very small, low-level stuff which we've made. And we've obviously already addressed those, that's that's quite easy for us to do. Uh, today, uh, myself, uh, Margaret and Jodie attended, um, health and safety, uh, management training. Um, just in, that's just in terms of how to manage health and safety in in terms of our assets and our events and that kind of thing, and then uh, how to deal with, you know, ride or and and all that sort of reporting mechanism. So that's been a useful reminder for us. That's been delivered by David, uh, from the district council.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Any questions from anyone? Jill?
Just, um, it's just triggered something in my brain, um, about vaping. So we've, do we have a vaping policy? Because I know that vape, you're not allowed smoking indoors places, but I think you are according to the law, allowed to vape. And I was just wondering if we've got any kind of policy, especially for people that hire the building and things like that. And it's not something to discuss now or debate now, but perhaps something for an agenda item when we keep you under health and safety, maybe, don't know.
Yeah, I think that that's a very wrong point, um, and I'm sure that's a date in the future, Sarah, we 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 can discuss this.
We can. I I've taken the view that smoking is vaping and smoking. Um, but I'm happy to amend that view if you want. So the signage that we've got is 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 going inside buildings and it says no smoking, no vape. But I'm, I'm happy to have that discussion if you you think that would be changing.
I I'm personally happy with that, but perhaps it should be on the agenda so that we can agree as a council, because I think, I think that's important, because some people do vape because it's not illegal to vape indoors, it's not under the same legislation, I don't think. So I think it's important to put that as a council together. I think it's a, it's a good discussion.
This, this, if you're sitting on the side of somebody who's vaping, just tick you off, or ticks me off, anyway, it would, I'm sure. So I think that's very wrong. Okay?
I'm sorry, I think, uh, absolutely, I will add that to an agenda. I'll put that on the finance, uh, strategy management committee agenda, um. I I think I've taken that view because I need to just make sure that our fire alarm systems would be happy with vaping, because obviously there is obviously a release of some gas or vapor, whatever it is, so I'll just do some research on that before. Thank you.
Hmm, very good. Um, so there's update on Biddleford Working Works Together.
Uh, thank you. So we've arranged a meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh of September. We've obviously agreed a budget through the finance strategy management committee. Um, and so we'll be able to fund activities under the town this year. Uh, we are already starting to see a lot of people who, I don't.
know for what reason why there's an increase recently, but who, uh, don't have access to food and, and don't have sufficient gas and electricity within their homes. So that is absolutely an issue going forward. So we're working to do, uh, a lot of referrals to, for supermarket vouchers and we can do those because we are a community health point. Uh, we're allocated that through the county council, which gives us access to pots of money like that, so we can make those referrals because of that kind of status. Um, we can feed that into those Biddle Works Together meetings. And obviously, uh, council councillors have alluded to that tonight, that we've had some discussions about the use of their grant funding to support activities as well.
Ooh, Sam's going to pay a jail, you first.
Yeah, just on that, because, um, one of our key partners is a food bank, Jack is calling at the moment. Um, I was just wondering if the town council, if the suns would get well.
Absolutely. So Chris?
Yeah, just on the Biddle Works Together, there is a grant, you know, from the district council, I think it's about thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand, uh, and it's based on community groups, helping with the cost of living crisis. So that, that's, I've got a meeting with the financial director on Thursday at the district. Hopefully they'll finalise that, but that's something that Biddle Works Together can, can tap into in terms of food banks and community groups and different things.
I think that's a very welcoming, uh, bit of news, Chris. Okay.
I mean, sorry. Thank you, no problem. Would it be useful before that, before those groups come together for that meeting, Sarah, if perhaps we fired an email out to them and asked them, um, well firstly, have they, have they actually put a bid in, and what Chris has just said, that, that's welcome, whether they actually put any bids into the shared prosperity fund and for them to give us any feedback, whether any of them have been successful, if they have. Obviously, the shared prosperity fund should hit a lot of the targets of many of those groups.
Thank you very much for that, Kevin. Any, any other questions of, of anyone? Not, not you?
No, I'm okay.
So you're mine, eh? Right. Right, we'll move on. Thank you very much for that, Sarah. It's item twenty-seven, to receive an update on outside body meetings attended in the past month. Andrew?
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, yes, Mollers Partnership Board, um, uh, monies have been allocated to projects, uh, still about two thirds of the budget is left. So I would encourage anybody, uh, who's thinking of putting together a bid for Mollers Partnership to consider if, if they've already put in a phase one bid, to put in a phase two and get that in, uh, as quickly as possible, please, uh, as there is still money in the kitty.
Do you very much?
Yes, and we need to grab as much as we can from Mollers Partnership.
He's going to say something, go on then. Sorry, Wayne, you, you.
I'll sit down.
Yeah.
Is, is it possible for the Conservative Club to apply for some faux chimney pots to actually make that look like it should? Because I know they got, I know they got retrospective, bloody version on appeal, but I still sit here and look out and think, oh, it's changed the character. And I think just having chimney pots on top of what they've done would actually put it back to where it, where it was, to be honest, you know, and it's not quite the same and that's not a slide that I understand why you're doing it, but that would actually enhance the street experience.
I don't want to help him, but I'm not helping the Conservatives.
Councillor Rogers, quickly and then.
Yes, just very quick, I was asking for an SPCA update. Just very quickly, we've got a new chief acting team called Robert Petty Group. Uh, he actually come along to here a few weeks ago, just myself, Sarah and myself. Um, seems very active. He wants to put a new face onto the parish assembly. He wants to move around the districts. We were at Pankridge last week, I think we're in Let's Feel Next Time, and he wants to come here at some point in the future. So he wants to put a new face on to it to be more active in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, Wayne. Jeff, councillor Smith?
Yeah, just, um, from Fairtrade, um, pleased to confirm that we have been, um, we're a fair trade community again and that will, um, be until the twenty-seventh of July, twenty twenty-six. Um, and Gillian Reynolds has asked me to convey, uh, her thanks for the support, especially from the town council and, and the, the town council team that has helped us that much.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Gav, were you indicating?
With regard to twinning, the twinning association hosted some visitors from Fusignano, uh, over the bank holiday weekend. Um, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the officers of the, of the council for allowing, and event to be hosted here in the town hall and for their support of the twinning group. I think the, our visitors had a thoroughly enjoyable time and, um, that's in their favour.
Thank you very much. Um, if you can then move on to, uh, twenty-eight, confirm that the town council has received a roster silver award. That's, sorry, whatever you want.
And, and obviously we like a gold award as a town council, but a silver award is, is an absolutely fabulous achievement for a town parish council.
Inglaisians for this.
Um, it's, it hopefully gives confidence in the people who book our facilities and the people who work with us that we will deliver. It adds another level of credibility to what we are able to deliver here and hopefully shows what, um, a competent organisation we are. So we have that silver award now. Um, as long as we don't break it. Basically, as long as we don't do something that means they take it away from us. If we ever did want to, uh, go for a gold award, we could do that. Um, it's the, the bigger organisations with health and safety teams and tend to achieve those, those levels of, of achievements. So um, we are really pleased with the silver award and thanks to you all for, um, indulging us as we went, as we went for that, but it's, it's a great achievement for everyone, so thank you.
Very much. Councillor Hart?
Yeah, the government for Biddle Town Council. Aren't we doing well? I can't just ask, have Lincoln Sheedle got that gung?
Uh, no.
That does not surprise.
Are you saying we're unique or pioneers or?
You're so good, it's unbelievable, Mr Mayor. We are really so good. Streets ahead above the rest.
Well, we've known that for years, that's incredible, Harry. Quality councillor, isn't it, here? Thanks, Dan. Um, any questions? Councillor Jones?
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I just, I just want to get you frustrated. Yeah, well done to Sarah and the team, it's them that have done it, not us. And I think it's another example of the diligence and honesty and thoroughness of this team that we've got. We have a first A-class team here. And I think we should, I move that we give them a big round of applause now, Mr Mayor.
Think the gas will sell really pretty soon.
Don't let stop until the next year, Mr.
Now, item twenty-nine, which is mine in actual fact, because money's going to be involved in this, should this be confidential?
Yeah.
Right, fair enough. Right, uh, councillors, the chain. Um, this thing. It's, you might not see it, but I've wired it together with electric cable. Um, because it's, it's falling apart, the, the smaller links here, because of the way, because the chain is getting bigger, the smaller links are stretching and breaking. Um, not only that, when you're putting it on, I think that does damage because you've got to be a bit of a on line to take it out of it.
Uh, oh. Have it back.
Oh, right. Um, you know, the more we use it, the more likelihood that it's going to get damaged. Um, and, you know, you've only got to look, over the last couple of years, the amount of events, the amount of events that, uh, the mayor goes to i- is increasing. There, there's no two ways about it. I can't remember, Jim, what you did, but it was, it was a fair number. Can you remember?
It was in three figures, put it that way.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the chain does get some hammer. Um, what I'm saying to you, what I've noticed with, with other councils, Leake, you know, etcetera, they have what I call it a halter, which is sort of a, a velvet framework, if you like, and their chains are then sewn on to this halter. That's the best word for it. Um, and that stops this thing flirting about and all that sort of business. Um, we do have some, well, as you're going around the paper, yeah. Uh, you can see from, from the image on, on the paper what I'm talking about. And I think if we went on that road, it's going to save the chain from being damaged further. Um, go on, Jill.
I think I'm just concerned, uh, Mr Mayor, about the restitching, William, for future engravings that is going to be a continuous cost. My suggestion, well, would be that we move this to finance strategy and management for debate. I think because we need to discuss it. But, but just off the top of my head, my view would be that we have a halter with the main dangling bit on, that you can use, for want of a better phrase, that you can use for kind of everyday events. So, I don't know, going to somebody and it's, it's their birthday, maybe with a few of the names, the older ones stitched on to it. But then the main chain, um, stays for special occasions and isn't stitched. Otherwise, we're just going to have a continuous cost all the time because the dongle can be taken on and off that as it stands. So maybe there could be a collar with the dongle, um, that you wear for every day, but the dongle could be reattached to the main chain, because I think from the looks of this, paying it anywhere between seven hundred and five pounds to, you know, five hundred quid or whatever, um, every year. Oh, I don't know if I'd, if it comes a bit too.
Um, no, no, where, where you get it every.
It says here, it says it has to be polished, uh, before it goes on to the, on to the collar. So therefore, in twelve months' time, when another link goes on, it would have to come off, be polished again and go back on. And that cost is going to be a yearly cost, not a one-off cost.
What is the answer?
Well, something similar to what I've just said, uh, something with the dongle for everyday wear and then not stitched on to anything for likely proper bling occasions.
But, all right then.
Needs a discussion, I think.
Yes, we do. This should I put as an agenda item?
I know, but this, the agenda item, Mr Mayor, for me, isn't for debates or discussion. It's just really for information giving. Generally, when we discuss things and we've got different ideas, it's done in a committee.
I think there's a level of, uh, procrastination, quite frankly. Um, because what, what is happening in addition to this thing getting damaged, of course, it pucks on your suit. That's why it's damaging your clothes, because, because you have to put these pins into etcetera. So that is not, uh, a good thing. The sooner we sort it out, the better. This is why it's been brought up tonight. Um, I'm believing to that the case, which, well, I believe has been repaired etcetera, um, Sharon, as you know, the deputy mayor, she picked the case up for me to get the chain out. The strap come off. The leather which is on it came off, which, uh, reveals as a metal strip. And that's lost its finger. You know, so I think the whole setup needs revamping, quite frankly. Um, it might have been all right fifty, hundred years ago, but it's now got all this weight to it and needs sorting out. Are you putting it under there?
Yes.
Go on.
Yeah. I think the mayor's got a valid point. I mean, I'm looking at it from this angle and the, the little crests are disappearing over the shoulder, which obviously increases the weight, not just for the wear, but but obviously for the worn chain itself. Uh, I think it might be a case of going somewhere where we can have a debate, but in a, in a timely manner, because it's something which does obviously want looking at. It might be an instance where, for want of a better term, some of the shields get retired and perhaps incorporated within, within the photographs. So you keep it to, to a manageable weight and size, which both maintains the integrity of the chain and obviously maintains the longevity of the wear. And then, and then if we do look at respectfully retiring and perhaps incorporating them within, within the photographs, within, within the names, which I think is, is a way of doing. Because eventually, you're not going to have the things going down your back, so there's got to be a decision made sometime. And now might be, now might be the time where it's reasonable to do that. And then perhaps you could have a velvet altar which just acts as a pad and then the chain goes over the top, because what you've got is manageable. And then if you get a situation where the, the photographs do have the shield on all the time, I think that is a respectful way of looking at it. But I think something like that does need a little bit of thought and debate and it's just, but as a suggestion at this moment in time, because it does disappear.
Yeah, we've got two councillors, councillor Jones, councillor Gav.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, I would advocate exactly, pretty much what councillor Yates has just said, Mike. But it does need debating broadly. I'm not, I'm not, personally, I'm not, I'm seeing a lot of them. I've, I've, I'm not a lover of these velvet collar things. And certainly to put a velvet collar on what you've got on now, the thing would have to be about eight inches wide. And it's just going to look like a bib. Maybe you need one, I don't know. I would advocate, I would advocate that. What councillor Yates has said.
Five pound fine.
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, I would tell councillor Yates, just I think maybe we need to change, we need to maybe restore that back to probably what it was five years ago, without that extra swag. With, with just with the newer, um, shields on it and we have a, a, an old, the old chain, if you like, the pre-two thousand chain, if you like. And that's just an old today. We keep that nice somewhere safe in a display case. Um, but it, you know, I've never had any issues with the chain. I've worn it two years, as you know, I didn't wear it a lot the second time now, and the first time I wore it, I haven't got that extra swag on. And personally, I think the extra swag being put on the front was a mistake. It should have been on the back. That's done now. But I think, you know, it needs proper discussion and proper debate and I, you know, I think we, we shouldn't make a decision on it tonight. But on, uh, I don't know, would it be TCC? Or finance? Yeah, finance, it's going across money, it's second.
And that.
I think, I think solid advocated that and I think that's what we should do, Mr Mayor, yeah.
Councillor Gav?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm councillor Jones, again, councillor Yates, I've said most of what I was going to say. Um, however, one thing I would advocate for is having been the proud custodian of the mayoral chain lap here and been to a number of events, I would hate to see the Biddle's chain diminished in any way. It is the envy of the entire district and in fact, most of the county. Uh, and therefore I would, I would hate to see that reduced in any way. And as previous speaker have both said, we need, need to have a formal debate and I can provide some additional expert input to the um, preparation of the type of device you're talking about from the good legacy, Seans, Chris.
Thank you very much, councillor Gav, you want to speak? And then Kevin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I'm just conscious, obviously, this is the fiftieth year, isn't it, of, uh, existence of Biddle Town Council, so, um, I would suggest that, yeah, it's nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four. Uh, it's perhaps a good time, you know, fifty years, to, to actually look at it fresh and, uh, have a, uh, say a debate about what's best to do, so I'd, I'd approve that.
Fair enough. Councillor Jackson?
Yeah, could we also investigate what the cost of the new box would be? Sounds like we need one anyway, from what we said, but.
If you have a new, a new, say that you had the altar setup and you had a new box, it's virtually the same as the altar. So you're talking over grand for both jobs.
Need that.
Yeah, yeah. Right, so I thi- I think Jill, you've proposed that it's moved to finance. Is there a second for Jill?
I'll send.
Well.
You happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy. Well, no, I'm not happy with it, but I accept, I accept, I accept it on forward, yeah, moves it forward. So right, can we have a show of hands, please, for a favour of moving this? Right, I think that's enough. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to current consultation period in relation to the neighbourhood plan.
Uh, thank you for coming, so, uh, obviously through planning committees continue to receive updates in relation to the neighbourhood plan and the neighbourhood development order. So, uh, we finally believe we've got to a position where we and the district council are agreeing to the amendments. Um, some of which agree with what the examiner had, uh, put forward, some of which we've amended the wording on and, um, had some quite challenging debates on. Anyway, we're, we're at a position where we're all quite happy. That document, I believe, has been to Cabinet for consideration at the district council and is now partway through a six-week consultation process. Um, on those final amendments, so I've pinged you an email this afternoon about that. Uh, just so you've got that email once you're in the base. As I understand it, the six-week process, um, ends uh, at the end of September. There's then a period where I think they then have five weeks in the planning team to process any responses that they've had. And then beyond that, I think that would then take us through October, beyond that, we could be looking at a referendum during November. And then beyond that, I think that would then take us through October, beyond that, we could be looking at a referendum during November. Um, obviously, that might slip a bit. And I guess probably as a council. Will be, we'll make that decision closer to. We probably don't want to be encouraging people to come out for a referendum when it's incredibly cold. So if we haven't done it before Christmas, uh, we need to be thinking about that. But we'll obviously take the advice of the elections team at Satsmo and stuff. So that's where we are. Any questions, I don't know?
Questions? Kevin?
You're on a raffle on the turnout. How many go a guess? How many goes to charity?
Are you being cynical?
Yeah, well.
Anyone else got a question or all that? Right, all in favour, please put your hands. Yeah, well, no for me, yeah. Uh, right, we move over to thirty one, a council in finance. Uh, you all had time to peruse.
Was a supplement.
Oh, and there's a supplement. So there's always a supplement.
They were at the entrance.
Oh, have you got yours? No. Have another one.
They're at the entrance, you're supposed to pick them up at the inside.
Oh, right.
Just during this brief interview, Mr. Mayor, can we get councillors not sat around the table in? Can we all shuffle a bit? Because I just feel a bit.
Well, he's he's got a bit of a cob on.
It's just be, we should be very inclusive and and he's sat out a limp.
It's a life case. I do keep glancing over to see if he's sat with us.
He hasn't fallen asleep at all. Right, if we can get back on to item thirty one then, uh, page one of this. Um, going down, has anybody got any queries? Or Kev?
Yes, on the page four, it's marked, go back. Got electricity bill for Eon, twenty five quid. And we've got a bill for for an octopus. What's that bit for, do you know? So I'm assuming there might be a standing charge to pay on that as well. I just don't understand where that's coming from or what it is.
What page are you talking, sorry?
It's on page four, number four.
No.
Second page, yes, second page. About ten or twelve down, Eon.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, so one of them's Christmas lights. So we have to pay a small amount of that throughout the year, standing charge. Um, and then the octopus is the normal day-to-day usage. Okay. So the Eon contract that we've got is such a good deal that there was no point in us moving from the Eon contract to everything with octopus. So the oct- the octopus deal is.
That's, that's.
It's a good one for day-to-day usage, yeah. But we have to pay the standing charge throughout the year.
Yeah, okay.
If I can come back to page one, which is the Mooland control, uh, contract cleaning.
Yeah.
You've got a bill of nine hundred and eighty one pounds, a few poppers, followed by one, actually, one thousand and five hundred. Seems quite hefty. This, this just come in August or?
Yeah.
This, but it's for the rest of the year, obviously.
I think that's for August.
That's for August?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a hell of a bill.
That's what we pay every month.
Is that every month?
Yeah.
We're spending a penny, but it's ridiculous.
If you calculate it down to an hourly rate, it actually does compute quite sensibly. That's.
Really?
That's why thousands of districts, those toilets. Progressive.
Yeah. Now, do we put this out to the tender? So are we tied in with it for some reason?
Uh, we we can get additional quotes on that as the time comes.
Oh, right. That's fair enough. Because I think it has been expensive, quite frankly.
I don't know if we know that, because at the time of doing it, that was the cheapest and.
Really?
And they've proved to be incredibly reliable throughout Covid and and.
So, so they only do the one that, uh, the. Range. They only do that one.
The centre and they do the public toilets over here.
That's about forty eight pounds a day.
Seven days a week.
Yeah.
They provide the cleaning materials.
Oh, somewhere along here. We've we've got bills somewhere for cleaning.
Yeah, that was over the board. That was Randall, wasn't it?
Randall, isn't it? Right. Yeah.
We won block.
We won block?
Move them, the expenses.
Is there a second for that? What's in the blue for? We've voted on that? One against, which is me.
You're voting against it?
And block.
The accounts?
Yes. No, the the motion really. I I think the accounts have got to be examined and just doing it to end block, you're not examining the accounts. Unless this went before finance committee first.
No, that's not the procedure. That's why you have it a week in advance, so you can consider it in advance for meeting.
So if I ask questions, members around the council straight away, can't they? Yeah. Councillor Jones?
Yeah, before we vote on, I just, I just noted that we seem to have spent in July in August ninety pound on pancakes. And I just wondered if councillor Rogers maybe needs to query it in.
I only ate most of them.
If I might, if I might provide some clarity on that, we continue to support the Approach Dementia Cafe. And they provide cheesy opecakes we come along.
Well, it's been, it's been passed anyway. Chris, sorry, mate.
Yeah, just before we, I know it's been moved and sacked, but we haven't voted on it yet. So, uh, the fountains and features, the fountain survey, um. Well, have we, are we on the seat of that?
Yes.
And it's into communities.
Into finance.
Uh, finance.
Yes.
We take it then that we voted on this, yes?
You're ready for the show, friends?
Right, um, minute, well, it's thirty two, to approve potential management arrangements in relation to.
Confidential items, now, you're moving it to.
Oh, yes, sorry, I never saw that, but.
For the public app.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the people on YouTube for attending this meeting and listening to us talk and try and do things. Unfortunately, we're now into what we call confidential items.